Good evening and welcome to the Hingham Board of Selectmen's meeting for Thursday, April 11th. Our agenda this evening, we have to approve some minutes. We're going to take a couple of votes to continue some public hearings that we won't be having tonight. Then we will be welcoming a star-studded cast of thousands to discuss Hingham's role in Plymouth County. And following that, at 8:00, we are planning to recess for an executive session relative to negotiations over real estate. We will, however, be returning to public session after that to do the annual evaluation of town administrators' performance. And after that, we will be going back into executive session to discuss negotiations, contract negotiations. So that's our agenda for this evening. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for April 4th. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 26, 2011.
And Selectman Laura will not be voting on this since she was not Selectman at that time, and I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on Aquarian Waters' request for a grant of location for East Street until April 18th at 7:25 PM, and as well, to continue the public hearing on Aquarian Waters' request for a grant of location for Union Street until April 18th at 7:30 PM. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The big excitement this evening is the beginning of a discussion about Plymouth County, its role in our lives, and Hingham's role in Plymouth County. And we will be having a presentation from Carl Harris, who was Hingham and Hall's representative to the Plymouth County Charter Commission. And he'll be discussing what I just described, Hingham and the county, and the county and Hingham. And we have in the room, I believe, every single elected official of Plymouth County, if I'm not mistaken. I'd like to welcome the Plymouth County Commissioners, all of them, Dan Pallata, Greg Hanley, Sandra Wright, thank you for being with us. We have Plymouth County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien. And we have the Plymouth County Register of Deeds, John Buckley. And as well, we have Selectman Ellen Allen from Norwell, who is the head of the Plymouth County Advisory Board. Also joining us, we have Kathy Salisbury, and I see Kate Boland from the League of Women Voters, who have been taking an interest in this subject. So we're going to have a discussion, we have an hour to have it. We're not going to finish our discussion this evening, that's for sure, but this is a good group for getting started. So I'm going to turn it over to Carl to give his presentation.
Carl Harris, Five Miles Road. This is a presentation about seeking the means to withdraw from Plymouth County government. The question we have framed, and is before us, is are the citizens of Hingham receiving benefits commensurate with the funding Hingham pays into Plymouth County government? My motivation here is the financial well-being of Hingham, nothing more. Over the past three years, in connection with my involvement with the Plymouth County Charter Commission, I've interviewed perhaps 200 county-state local officials throughout Massachusetts. Please understand, I don't pretend to know everything about county government, but I know enough to realize there is a problem that Hingham needs to address as best it can. Now, my first slide is a slide showing where the county system was 30 years ago. And there's 14 counties here, eight of them have now been dissolved, or as the state calls, abolished. One of the last ones to be abolished, well, was one of the last, was Suffolk. And from Wikipedia, I will just quote, "Like an increasing number of Massachusetts counties, Suffolk County exists today only as a historical geographic region and has no county government. All former county functions were assumed by state agencies in 1999." Now, the next slide is interesting because now shows the current counties of Massachusetts. The yellow shows where the abolished counties, or the dissolved counties, are now. The 70% is showing that the 70% of citizens of Massachusetts live in areas where there is no county government. 30%, on the other hand, live in the existing counties, the extant counties. Now, the very interesting thing about this is, one interesting thing is Nantucket. You say we have six counties out of the 14 left. Nantucket is a strange animal where the county and the town government are one and the same. So I mean, if you want to be technical about it, it's a county, but it's not like Plymouth County, which has 500,000 people. And it's not like Bristol County, which is in the hundreds of thousands of people, and Norfolk, and Barnstable is less. Dukes has about 10,000 plus, Nantucket about 10,000 plus. Dukes, as I said, is Massachusetts, Vineyard, and the Elizabeth Islands. Now, what's interesting about this is we're all paying our state income tax in a few days, or if we haven't paid it already. And what happens is, everybody in the state pays for the benefits that the people who now live, that 70%, who now live in the abolished area, we'll call that the abolished area, they live in that abolished area, we pay the taxes for their benefits that they used to get from counties, because we're paying state taxes. And the state revenue is used to fund the registry of deeds, buildings, the court buildings, the 4H clubs. And then, we turn around, and every year, we pay our annual assessment to the county. So I just think there's maybe a little double taxation in there somewhere. Now, the next slide shows Hingham, I mean, shows Plymouth County. And you can see, from Plymouth County is a very large, elongated, and is really divided into four different groups. Everything to the north there is really oriented to Boston, or 128. And then, if you come over to Brockton, it's urban, suburban, around Brockton. Then down in Lakeville, Middleborough, Carver, Rochester, you have the Cranberry towns. And they slop over into Bristol, and Free Town, and some of those places. And then, over in Plymouth is an area by itself, it's so big. So I see four diverse areas there. As compared to, for instance, Barnstable, which is Cape Cod. And Cape Cod is tourism, tourism. Oh, we have some tourism in Plymouth, but not like Cape Cod. Tourism is pulling everybody together as a unit. Turo and Hyannis are different populations, but they certainly have in common the tourists that come in. And it's interesting, all they have in common is beaches. Every town in Barnstable has one beach, or even, most of them have two beaches, I mean, two coastlines. You have the bay, and you have the oceanfront. So these are things that pull a county like Barnstable together, but I don't think we have that in Plymouth County. Anyway, I go now to what the county used to be. I grew up in this town in the, whoops, excuse me, I grew up in the town in 1950s or so. And the county was robust then. You had a court system, a Bureau of Criminal Investigation, District Attorney's Office, correction facilities, Sheriff's Department, probation department, you had a hospital, you had county roads, you had a very robust corporate extension program. I mean, Hingham used to be a much more agricultural place. Well, I remember seven or eight working farms here, and a couple of big chicken farms. But that's all gone now. There's one farm remaining, and it's a nonprofit farm. And things have changed, and things do change. In fact, it's interesting that in our warrant every year, and one of the first articles, we would have an article about will the town confirm appointment of Director of the Plymouth County Corporate Extension? And it tells all about what the extension does at that time. And we had the same person being elected every year, oh, for quite a few years. And then, that person came and told the town fathers that there was nothing to do in this position, it was useless. And so, we've dropped it from our, the warrant this year, we don't even carry that. And we didn't carry it last year. It's not in this year's audit either. So, in this year's, excuse me, warrant article. Now, the next slide I want to show you is what the county does now. And I'm sure I can be corrected on this by who's in attendance. But there's a parking ticket processing program that's new. There's a fire spotter airplane, the registry of deeds, we have to maintain all the property we have in the county, all the courthouses, all the registry of deeds buildings, and then we have 4H programs. Now, I will have a point to know that there are many, many agencies or organizations that are called Plymouth County this and Plymouth County that. But many, many people construe these as being part of Plymouth County government, and they are not. The Plymouth County Sheriff's Office and the jails are not part of Plymouth County government. They went to the state in 2009. The Plymouth County Mosquito Control Project is not part of Plymouth County government. It is a state agency that is funded by the federal government. The Plymouth County Contributory Retirement System is not part of Plymouth County government. Plymouth County is one out of 52 units, or member units, and Hingham is not, Hall is not. The Plymouth County, the Mayflower Health Group is not part of Plymouth County government. Plymouth County is one unit member out of 34. Hingham is a member of that. Plymouth County Conservation District is not part of Plymouth County government. The Plymouth County Fire Chief Association is not part of Plymouth County government. There, and on it goes. Now, we come down to, we come down to, where are we now? I guess I'm going the wrong way, excuse me. Yeah, we come down to the county services now used by Hingham. There's one less. We don't use the parking ticket processing program. We use another agency to do that. So let me just go through. I want to talk to you about the fire spotter airplane, and tell you why I've got a question mark there. The registry of deeds, county property maintenance, and the 4H programs. All right, let's first talk about the fire spotter airplane. No other county, or former county, has an airplane due to cost benefit. However, there are reasons for what the state is doing. The state is focusing on fire towers. There are 43 fire towers. And I talked to David Salino, Chief Fire Warden at the Mass Bureau of Forest Fire Control. It's the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Now, he tells me that Plymouth County has the most towers of any county. And they have Norwell, Hanson, Carver, Kingston, Middleborough, Plymouth, and there's two that look into Plymouth County, one from Bourne, and one from Holbrook, which is nearby. Holbrook is in Norfolk, and Bourne is on Barnstable, just across the canal. So there are really eight that focus on, so it's towers versus airplane. And the thing here is, what Chief Fire Warden Salino said, is that the trouble with airplane is when it leaves an area, say it's in Wampatuck Park, which we have in Hingham, and it's a forest, and we're concerned about the fires there. Say it's in Wampatuck Park, but the next scheduled place is Middleborough. And it doesn't have a rear view mirror. So the first time that plane leaves, goes over the Norwell border, or goes over the Hingham border, out of Wampatuck Park, a fire could start. And it wouldn't be spotted at all by that airplane until the next time it came around, whatever the routing was. So it seems to me that tower versus airplane is an interesting concept, something we should continue to look into, but I'm just wondering if it makes sense to have this airplane. Now, let me tell you where the Norwell Tower is. The Norwell Tower is on Judges Hill, on the Wampatuck State Park line in Norwell, property overlooking, looking right down and into Wampatuck State Park. So I just think maybe this fire spotter airplane isn't that much of a benefit to Hingham. Well, let's talk about the registry of deeds, and I'm sure John will want to correct me if I did anything wrong. I think the registry of deeds is financially self-sustaining, and as such, it gets more money in than it's cost to run the registered deeds. But it only gets 11% of the deeds taxes, and the taxes that are paid whenever you sell property or buy property. It only gets 11%. And the state gets 89%. But the registered deeds with 11% is financially self-sustaining. So what are we paying our annual assessment for? If we don't maybe really need the fire spotter airplane, and the registered deeds is self-sustaining, county property, well, there's, we have one court. We have a Hingham District Court. And it's the county owns it, the state rents it, and what happens if the county or the state decides to close courts, as they were trying to do last year, and they didn't close Hingham or Wareham? That's something that the state is going to decide on, it's not something the county's going to decide on. They will decide, well, Hingham's got to go, or Wareham's got to go. But that's what they decide, not the county, and not Hingham. And our representative, our senator, should be prepared to work on our behalf on that situation. Now, the 4H programs, as I said, I was in Hingham growing up in the 50s, and there were seven or eight working farms. Now, there's one. There's a Rare River Farm. And it's owned and operated and funded by the trustees of reservations, which is a nonprofit that doesn't pay taxes. And they do have a robust 4H club there, and several different clubs. And again, we are seeking the means, I am suggesting we seek the means to withdraw from Plymouth County, because this is all we have, and we should look at what we have and see how we can meet those needs in another way. So it comes down to this, registry of deeds are self-supporting. The county property, maybe we have to maintain that somehow, if the county's not going to. But it's not ours, it's the county's. The 4H programs, there's one 4H program, one group, in Hingham, and the fire spotter airplane is in question. So this is what it comes down to. Now, the next slide shows you our recent assessments. This is what the town is paying. It goes up every year, supposedly by 2.5%. Now, Ted, I don't know what that 5% is in there, I got those from not your office or something.
I budget 5% increases a year. Not that you are going to get 5% increases, but I budget 5% increase.
Oh, you budgeted 4%, okay. So, no, I thought that the county could get 2.5% every year, but Dan could correct me. But, okay, I know you will. The 13.7 is when the town was reassessed. And it's reassessed every three years. So this 5% and 5% is probably very realistic, Ted, because you can't keep it at 2.5. If it's the third year, in 2016, you're going to take it up again. Now, those kind of percentages really start driving the number up quite a bit. If you get another 13.7 year, you're going to drive up that number. So are we getting that kind of, are we getting back in the few things the county does for this kind of money? Or is it worth it? Or would this money not be better spent for teachers, firefighters, policemen, or even tax relief right here in Hingham? So, excuse me. Now, there are a number of financial questions I have that I'm worried about in the county. One is assets versus liabilities. And I think in the FY '12 budget, there was a line item for sale of an asset, of a property. But where does that lead to in selling off assets? It leads to a point where you're not going to have any assets. And the thing was, I believe, and Tom could correct me, I think that was part of a operational budget, where the sale of that million point two property, whether that's gone through or not, has, was part of the operational budget. And you're going to have to find that million two again the next year. So anyway, if you keep selling assets off, you won't be able to meet the liabilities. We have a pension liability that at one time, when I first started in the Charter Commission, was at 2028, we would get the full-funded pension, that was the target. Now, it's up to 2030, but it assumes a sustained stock market growth of eight and a quarter. Now, if we can do that, that's wonderful. That's wonderful. But I personally think that's rather aggressive. But maybe I'm wrong. If that's the right figure, that will work, but it seems like, but if you cut it back to a shorter figure, that full-funded target goes out some more. Not to 230, but to 235, 240, depends how much you cut back, the estimate of the eight point and a quarter. Now, other post-employment benefits, OPEB, these are the health benefits that have been promised to employees, and now, they're unfunded in the county, and they're growing. I think Hingham is to be commended, they've started funding a couple of years ago, and have met this problem. This is something that I think the county has to face up to sooner or later, and maybe they've made plans for this. Well, I'll hear about it if they did. The audits, I just want to mention that the audits weren't done between, in the time span, 2004 to 2011. There was no audits done. They started, I guess, around 2011, 2012, and there has been some progress in getting them up to date. But an audit, to me, is something where you have a management letter with the audit telling you that you should be doing this, you should be doing this, or you should consider this. Now, there hasn't been any management letters, because there hasn't been any audits for seven years. So I think maybe nothing was done in that time to, maybe everything's perfect in the finances of the county, but it could be otherwise. Now, the county charter is slated, it's in committee now, it didn't get on the 2012 ballot. And then, it was resubmitted, and now, it's in committee, Committee of Municipalities and Regional Government. And once it comes out of committee, it has to pass by both houses. Then it goes on to be on the ballot in 2014. But one thing we have to know, there's two things that could happen on the ballot. In 1986, there was also a Plymouth County Charter Commission, and in 88, it was on the ballot, and it got turned down by two to one margin. Now, the other thing is, what if it does pass? Well, I'm one of the five people that signed a minority report, and that's up on the Plymouth County Charter Commission website. And you can see the charter there, and you can also see the minority report. And there are a number of things in the minority report that we, in the minority, thought were going to be troublesome. One is increasing the county commissioners from three to five. So keep going on like that. Now, there will be an exit price, and my whole point in this is, if we don't get more benefits, if we keep paying more in our annual assessment, if assets keep declining and liabilities keep going up, you can be sure that it's not likely to be substantially more in the future, it will be substantially more in the future, to exit from Plymouth County. And so, I propose to the selectmen that there be an investigation and a negotiation to determine the means to withdraw with the state officials, with county officials. We have to ascertain the exit cost, and we have to investigate the different options that Hingham has for funding such an exit cost. And I do think that any committee that might be appointed for this, if the selectmen think it's a good idea, should look at the benefits we do get, the few benefits we do get, and try to find how we'll meet those needs. Now, there is a precedent for all this, and just a month ago, in Brookline, Brookline selectmen agreed to a resolution that they then sent out to all the town administrators in Norfolk County. And they've got, I just talked to a man named Fred LeBeau this evening, and who was active in that area, and he told me this response from the town administrators has been very positive, and now, the same resolution will be, over Brookline Stationery, will go out to the selectmen and the mayors in Norfolk County. So I want to ask you if you would please consider the resolution. A lot of people have given us feedback on that, a great many people have read it, made suggestions. I don't think it's something that every word is correct, but I ask you to consider it, and think about it, and think about what I've said about, and endorse this, and so we can move ahead and seek the means to withdraw from Plymouth County. I want to thank you for the time, and I hope I've been some help to Hingham. I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Carl. Betty, you want to turn off the lights while you're over there? I just want to say that when I was listing the notables who are here today, I forgot to mention Bob Wesgerta of Brockton, who represents part of Brockton, and East Bridgewater on the Plymouth County Charter Commission as well. And so, what we're going to do now is, I will ask my colleagues if they have questions. for Carl. And then we will open up the floor for some discussion. We're not going to vote on this resolution this evening. I'm going to suggest that we take it under consideration and discuss it again next week at our meeting, so people have time to consider things, find answers to questions and whatnot if they wish. So, I will just begin with you. Do you have any questions for Carl?
Yes. But I should be careful in the questions, because I haven't heard from Plymouth County. And I want to make sure that they get equal time, which I know Laura, you will give them, because that's the way you do things. So, thank you for that. The pension liability, if you go back to a slide, please, Carl. There you go. Go back forward to one more, come the other way.
Yeah, I got you.
All right, okay. There we go. Okay. The pension liability, 8.25 percent. I would ask my town administrator, what do we use as a forecast for ours?
We're at 8.1 percent.
Okay. So, that's within the ballpark perhaps, or?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know where the county is in terms of, I think you have to ask the treasurer whether reviewing it. But a lot of systems are looking at trying to lower their assessment for the long term. But of course, you lower your assessment, you increase your cost to your member communities.
Yes, right.
Balancing act when you have a member communities that are struggling to make ends meet.
Okay. On the OPEB obligation, which we wrestled with a few years ago, is there any plans, do you know Carl, to do anything on that? Or is that a question I should hold?
That's a question for the.
Okay. And the audits, which was a concern, as you know, one of the things I did when I became a selectman was establish an audit committee. And that's, I guess, a question for them as well. And I think I'll hold my question on, is what you told us is, do they agree with or where they disagree? Now, I'll wait for that. Okay? Thank you.
Questions for Carl before we?
I want to thank Carl for the dogged work that you've put into this, and really the time and effort. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the county. One of the things I'd like us to consider in the resolution is to validate the fact that we should pull out.
Meaning?
And go back, and based on what we hear tonight, go back, we have all of Carl's work, put on top what we hear from the county, if there are things that they're doing, and validate the fact that in fact, we want to pull out and have the real numbers. Because right now, we've got estimates, from what I gather, for the OPEB. And what kind of a bill are we going to be presented with? If we do in fact?
There's no estimate for the OPEB yet.
I don't have that.
Okay.
I think we might get it from officials.
And that's the only thing I might ask to add into the resolution, that whoever this committee is, that they go back and just validate the fact that in fact, we want to leave town, in fact.
Okay.
I just want to say that I have copies of the resolution and also a backup information sheet that I provided people. But I have copies for you, if anybody wants them.
Okay. We'll open the discussion for Mr. Pallada. Please come on up and take the seat up here and.
I would appreciate it if the commission.
Absolutely.
Do everything as a unit.
Okay.
We'll just need a couple of chairs.
Plymouth County Commissioners.
Bring with you.
Mr. Pallada, standing to the right hand. Greg Hanley, thank you for joining us. Appreciate you taking the time to come down.
Maybe we can just shut off the screen.
Okay. Sure. You want to turn off? Mr. Pallada.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. And I want to say on behalf of Plymouth County that I am saddened by your departure from your board, as I've had the pleasure of serving with you, both as a selectman from Hanover and on the Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Well, thank you.
And we have been formidable foes and friends. And I'm sure we'll continue to do so. So, I'm going to miss you. And everyone else will be missing you too.
It's not going as far as you think.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to rebuff some of what was said tonight. Clearly Plymouth County doesn't want to influence any decision that Hingham wants to do for Hingham. You're your own entity, and we clearly understand you have to make decisions for your people and what you believe is best for Hingham. And we want you to know that we're here as partners, we're not here as adversaries. I, as you know, asked the advisory board to create the Charter Commission, which brought a lot of county issues to the forefront, which was sorely needed. The vote ironically was unanimous, but one vote, and that one vote was an abstention from Hingham back in March of three or four years ago, which I find pretty ironic. But the Charter Commission worked pretty hard. And the Charter Commission came up, did, we did look at dissolution as a viable option for Plymouth County. And the minority report that they're talking about was never deliberated at any of the meetings that I attended, nor did I ever receive a copy of any minority report. And I don't know whether you guys met outside of the open meeting, open meetings that we had, but I certainly don't know anything about it, but I'd like to read it. As for the county itself, Plymouth County does do a lot of things. We don't do as much as we have in the past. And we have a new commission that's been dedicated for the first hundred days to trying to correct a decade or two of ills, including but not limited to many other things that were indicated by Carl Harris. First and foremost, I want to make some corrections to what he had to say. He didn't have bulk purchasing on there. We do bulk purchasing. We purchase police vehicles for most communities in Plymouth County, fire apparatus for some of the communities in Plymouth County, gas purchases, salt purchases. We are currently working with the housing authorities to put out our first housing authority purchase. I don't know if Hingham has a housing authority, but you yearly replace stoves and dishwashers and things of that nature, and we are doing that. What we are finding is that we can create tremendous savings to the member towns that want to join. We have, in Tuesday's Goods and Services bulletin, our first assessing purchase, and this has all been done in the first hundred days. The county is a unique position to be able to offer services to the member towns. And what we have noticed is that every assessing department is, appears to be subcontracting out some or all of their assessing duties, and they're all doing it with their own RFPs. We're trying to consolidate, have one purchase, and have the member communities participate at a savings to each community. The Fire Chiefs Association, that Carl had mentioned, that is not part of Plymouth County, is not technically part of Plymouth County, however, has a license from Plymouth County, and you train your firefighters on Plymouth County land, up behind Cabot Road in Plymouth, something that we have started, and we are hoping that we can build a full-fledged academy so that we have to stop sending our firefighters to Barnstable County. This is one of the goals of this commission, is to get that academy built. Right now, they're doing training to remove people, but they can't do firefighting training until the facility is fully built out. The fire control plane does not fly around all day looking for fires. It's called a spotter plane, because when it gets called to a fire, it spots and tells the firefighters that the fire line is going to the northwest or to the southeast, so that lines can be set up. And if you ask your counterparts in Abington, they will tell you three years ago, it saved three subdivisions from burning to the ground when a firefighter burned out of control in Abington. So, the Plymouth County firefighter plane, at its whole $15,000 a year, probably paid for itself in that one event for a decade or two. The courthouses, yes, we operate three courthouses. Yes, Hingham is one of the courthouses. All three of the courthouses are currently in a state of repair that we're trying to correct. If you go to Hingham District Courthouse, it doesn't meet muster with the new boards of commission, and we are working on RFPs to upgrade all the courthouses. Every year, every single year, we get threats of courthouses closing. We do fight for all the courthouses. I can tell you as an individual commissioner, that this commissioner is going to fight for all the courthouses. I'm not going to let Hingham go, should Hingham choose to not want to be part of our county. However, I am going to fight a little harder for Wareham if Hingham chooses to go in a different direction. And there may come a day that we lose a courthouse. 4-H programs, I think you touched on Ware River. We actually have a volunteer here tonight from Ware River, and hopefully you'll have time to hear from her. She receives lots of assets from Plymouth County, from an educational program that Plymouth County has to the Ware River 4-H program. Registry of Deeds, Carl is 100% correct. The registry of deeds does generate a profit, if you want to call government a profit. We currently get $10 to record a document out of $77. In 1981, we got $10 to record a document out of $10. The state is using Plymouth County as a financial means to raise revenue. Make no bones about it. If Plymouth County goes away, it's just to fatten the coffers of Plymouth County. I wish we had this discussion in 2009, when the vote was taken to take the sheriffs, because the sheriff's jail had $148 million bond on it with eight years left to pay. The Plymouth County, you, the residents of Plymouth County, received no money. That's a donut. You received 38 million in liability, but you received a donut for that bond value, which at the time was probably 90 to 100 million dollars. The state has since refinanced that jail, and that money has gone. I'm guessing, Carl, to the 70% of the state, because it's not coming to Plymouth County. The cost of running the jail since 2010 has gone up significantly. I don't know the exact numbers, because it's hard to get it out of the budget. But from the numbers that we see, based on the 2009 year that we were administrators, and the latest budget, it is clear that the cost of running the Plymouth County Correctional Facility has gone up a significant percentage. The same will occur with the registry of deeds, should the county go away. Our registry of deeds has satellite offices. When you record a deed, you can go to Rockland, or your attorneys from the North Shore can drive down to Rockland. It's a service that's not offered in other counties. Some counties do offer satellites. We push for satellites. We have three registry of deeds in our county. It's a service. It costs money to do the service. Assets, this board of commissioners has voted that there will be no sale of any real estate assets to operate Plymouth County. That is no sale. It is something that we had to do during the tough years of the recession, because Plymouth County is not allowed to save money. That's right. We don't have a stabilization account. We're not allowed to have one. We filed a bill to create a stabilization account, because we're anticipating it's going to pass, and that we're going to be able to start operating like a municipality and put money away for a rainy day. Pension liability, that we have 90 employees plus or minus in Plymouth County. We have a pension liability of 28, 29 million?
32.
32 million, I'm sorry. 32 million. Do you think the 97 employees can help pay for the 32 million? The numbers are upside down and backwards. And that's because we're still paying for court officers. We're still paying for nurses. We're still paying for a tremendous amount of sheriff's employees. That is a responsibility of Hingham, even though you're not in our retirement system, because those employees were part of the county. We are working on and have filed four bills with the legislature to begin to eliminate this problem. This is something that has not happened with any county commission in the past. We have a bill to change the deeds excise tax, so that Plymouth County gets money that Plymouth County raises. We have a bill to allow us to take a piece of deeds excise tax to knock down that sheriff's liability on a yearly basis. We have a bill to transfer more of the fee money of the $77 to Plymouth County. Our residents are paying it. Our residents should get the benefit of it. Right now, that money is going to other counties, not Plymouth County. Audits and OPEB. This board, in its second meeting, ordered an OPEB actuarial study. None had been done. We've been in office 100 days, and we've got all of these things going on. Audits, I have had the privilege of seeing, seeing the draft audit from 2006 to 2000, I'm sorry, 2004, '05, and '06. It will be a major accomplishment for us to get this audit done. Seven, eight, and nine are queued up. Where did I get the years off, Tom? Six, seven, eight.
You're very close. There's audits for four and five.
Right. Six, seven, and eight.
Six, seven, eight, and nine.
Right.
And then you have plans.
To do, to catch us up. Within a year, we will have audits caught up to date. Imagine Hingham trying to do an audit of the MBTA. You can't. All the records are in Boston. Well, guess what? That's what we're tasked with doing, with hospitals, leftover liabilities. The sheriff's department is now with the state. It's not easy. It's not as simple as just walking down to the town accountant's office. All right? We had an elected treasurer who didn't use computers, did things in ledgers, who had been there for a gazillion years. We've automated. We've brought it to the 21st century. We have a long way to go. We're just not quite to the goal line on the audits. But you have the word of this commission, that within a year, we'll be caught up, which is another thing that you and I agreed on, and I think we bashed everybody during the years on the advisory board. So, those are some corrections that I wanted to point out, and some positives. I know that my colleagues here both also wanted to talk a little bit. Commissioner Wright wants to talk about some of the programs we've done, that part that I haven't touched on. And Commissioner Hanley wants to talk about the cooperative manner, which two Republicans and our lone Democrat over here.
And they have one female.
Has been working together to correct, quite frankly, some of the frustrations that Carl has had. But remember, a 19-member Charter Commission came up with a solution, and the solution was a charter. And that charter should go to the voters, and the voters should decide the fate of Plymouth County. And unfortunately, we haven't gotten it that far. For some reason, we can't seem to get it to the voters. Hopefully, we'll get to the voters in the 2014, and the final arbitration will be the people that we govern.
Thank you, Dan. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners if you have something to add, but I just wanted to say something that I wish to say at the beginning, and I just want to make sure that I get it out there, which is that I would like to offer a vote of confidence for each of those elected officials of Plymouth County who are in the room. We had, and I think that the register of deeds, county treasurer, do a terrific job, both of them with their jobs. Our new commission, from last year and from the year before when Ms. Wright was elected, is a completely different kettle of fish. I would not be saying this about the previous commissioners, just so.
Know what I?
Just so people know. And I feel, I want to be clear that the discussion that we're having here is not at all about the performance of any of the elected officials in the room, who I feel like, for people who don't know, Commissioner Pallada and Commissioner Hanley were both former selectmen, so they have sat in this seat. They understand the issues. That cannot be said about the previous commissioners. And so, we are all working on the same problem. And what's the answer? I don't know yet. But we'll be deciding on, you know, what we think is good for Hingham. But I don't want this discussion to reflect negatively in any way on the efforts of the elected officials in the room, because I think everybody's doing a terrific job.
Well, if you're going to vote to, if you are personally going to vote to secede, can you delay it until after your term's up?
We'll see about that. Let me just turn it over to.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Okay.
I just need to have that.
Just need to have that. The floor is in front of you.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Sandra Wright, County Commissioner. I'm from Bridgewater. I also sit on the town as a councilperson. I've been, I worked eight years as the Board of Health and I'm now Commissioner. And I'd like to say that I'm very grateful that I have two new commissioners that are here to support me and have a vision to where we need to go. And with that, I'd like to just elaborate a little bit on some of what Dan had already spoke about. I might be reiterating a little bit of what he said, but county government is an extremely efficient level of government in the Commonwealth. And I find that without county government, there is no Commonwealth. And I believe that the towns that do profit or benefit from most of these things that we offer are Brockton, Plymouth, Wareham, Hingham and Rockland. And some of those things that we do support for the county is we, the administration of financial management of the Mayflower Health Group, the operation of a parking ticket process program for more than 30 governmental entities. We manage the oversight of a bulk purchase bid for municipal vehicles. We also manage an oversight of bulk purchase bid for gas and diesel fuel. And we manage an oversight for a bulk purchase bid for police and fire equipment. We also have the operation and maintenance of the fire control airplane, which has brought up many times. And I can tell you, in going out to the towns and sitting with them and asking them, you know, what can we do for them, several of the towns have said that, you know, we've saved them hundreds of thousands of dollars in the plane and they've been able to go out and, you know, spot with the fires. We also have a funding and support for local tourism in Plymouth County. We, the administration of federal grants available through county government. We're also now entering into a housing authorization, the housing authority, I'm sorry, and regional assessment for the different towns. We do also have the state-of-the-art registry of deeds, which is also in Rockland and Brockton, a satellite. And we do have the three courthouses in which she had spoke of. We are very actively involved in them and we will continue to support the courthouses. I know that there is a lot of maintenance and care that needs to be done on them. And we are, you know, traveling around to the different towns and asking each town what we can do. We're now a new group and, you know, we feel and we know that we are here to support each and all of the towns. And with the economy the way it is, the towns are going into more of a regionalized entity and we're there to support them. And I think that's about all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My apologies. I have some information I'd like to submit and it's with regard to the county legislation that we've filed. It'll give you more of a specific purpose of the legislation that was touched upon here tonight. These are remedies that we felt as a commission were the first things we could address because of our relationships, as you pointed out, with other municipal leaders due to our representation of our own communities. I'm chairman of the Board of Select in the town of Pembroke and was elected in November 4th. And I, you know, chartered, the Charter Commission, I married them due to the campaign. And what I learned while going there was that there was a $64 million obligation of the county. And 50 million of that is in unfunded liabilities and pension obligations and $14 million was in mortgages to courthouses that are in disrepair. To further the arguments or the presentation of my colleagues, some of the other things that we've talked about and have actually partnered with. The number one thing, Laura, I know you and I talked about regional trash. We have successfully received a grant of $20,000 from Bridgewater State University from their regional studies program that will help fund a countywide trash initiative and it'll look at county trash from the point of view of vendor managed solution, a county managed solution and a public-private partnership. And that money will go towards the folks that are in the master's program that need projects to complete their master's thesis. So that's one thing that wasn't talked about. We are in negotiations with a company called Power Management Group. They are joining us and again, in a public-private partnership to create the Plymouth County Energy Program. And that will take advantage of the expertise of these folks. They're a national company that has buying power nationally and we are partnering with them as our agent for solutions for communities in the fields of power management, whether it's, I'm not going to say windmills because that's not a popular thing in any community, but solar fields, energy efficiency programs, pump reduction programs and energy audits. And we are proposing to handle the administrative functions of that partnership for communities to participate in. For the first time in our history, you have, as you alluded to, three local leaders with municipal experience. And we know the parts of a town and city budget that need furthering or assistance beyond the means of the state and the federal government. We all know the cuts that sequestration is bringing to the state. We also know the proposed fee hikes and the House has got their bill out there. This group of people, we've been working to try to get outside the box. One of our, I think, promising collaborations is with our federal delegation. We all suffered some losses in this blizzard and for the coastal communities, we had a lot of beach erosion. And we have been in contact with Congressman Lynch's office, Congressman Keating's office, Senator Mo Cowan's office and Senator Warren to address, from the federal side of the ledger, grant opportunities for communities that just don't have monies available to deal with seawalls and seawall repair. We entered into some discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers as part of that discussion and those discussions are ongoing. With respect to our first 100 days, I think you can look, as you alluded to, to the previous administration that openly had two members of its committee that advocated for the abolition of county government and they did everything on their way out the door to make that happen. And quite frankly, had I known to the degree that we had these issues, I may not have run, but I'll tell you what.
You might have moved to Hingham.
I might have moved to Hingham, that's right. Which I have children that go to NDA, so I am partly a Hingham person. But I will say that the change in attitude and aptitude have really made a difference. We are a mixed culture here, but there's no bipotisanship. We all understand the issues that are affecting us. And when you can manage county government from a town-wide or city-wide point of view, we think we can contribute, at least this group, to the future of county government. I don't really want to dwell on the past. We all know the problems associated with it. And to be honest with you, I think Mr. Harris's presentation was something that was germane maybe two years ago. But I can tell you, since November 4th, we did not wait to meet when we got elected. We started meeting in December because we knew what we were up against. And I think that type of dedication, and call it youthful exuberance, call it whatever you will, we are dedicated to looking at ways to help the county help you. For example, when you look at engineering services, what is the budget for engineering services in this town? Do you have a town engineer?
Yes.
You do. So you're an exception to the rule when it comes to other towns.
They have everything here.
Yeah, well, and God bless them. And God bless them for having it. But I will say the other 26 communities take a line item out of their budget and they attribute that to services that are outside their ability to fund. So they have to subcontract it. And in those areas where we represent our communities, the sacred causes of police, fire, DPW, clerical and education, you can't talk about. But when you outsource something to a far-profit entity to provide a service to your town, the economy is skilled that's realized when you can go with a countywide initiative where you can combine the buying power of 26 communities because one has their own engineering firm. But Brockton does too, so I stand corrected. When you look at the legal, so you have a town solicitor, I'm sure. The town of Pembroke does not. We contract a cop, minimum page. These are two line items, $800,000 in engineering and $1 million in legal services that we as a county can put together collaboratives, initiatives to where we can provide services on an a la carte menu because not all the services we're providing are needs of your community. However, if we look at it from the point of view of the county as a whole, if we can revenue generate, we are going to reduce costs for all of us, especially when it comes to the OPEB obligations and the unfunded liabilities that are out there. But if I'm able to take for you a training academy in Plymouth County for firefighters, we're going to reduce costs for you so you can hire more police and fires folks. We have an initiative right now that we're dealing with, with the sheriff on a gun range. It's a, an issue that the previous commissioners licensed and there was problems. Well, we've resurrected that to where it's going to be a public-public partnership. The corporation still exists. It was never abolished and never dissolved. So we see that as an opportunity to create a training facility that costs you currently for your police officers. So I could keep going on and on. I just think that, you know, our capable department heads are difference makers. I believe they were suppressed in their abilities by the previous board. I don't think I'm speaking out of school when I say that. But I think when you look at this presentation that was given to you, that was an answer to the previous administration. And I think if you need a reason to stay in county government, all you have to do is look to the information that was provided to the Charter Commission for 22 people to come up with an informed decision. And Mr. Harris was part of that and members of this committee were part of it. And after two years, deliberations were made and informed decisions. It'll be painfully obvious to the town of Hingham, when you get that same review of the information, that you will stay in county government for the fear of the liability factor. However, the proactive nature that we're taking, we're looking to partner with you. And I know the chairman wants to cut in, but I will say this and I want to thank him for his leadership because he is taking county government to the towns. Every other meeting of the county commissioners is in a town and we're doing it alphabetically. So we're out of term being here as an H. Hingham.
We're going to skip H.
But we, in our presentations to those cities and towns, we ask you, what are the areas in your town government that you could see would be advantageous with partnering on other communities? It's done all the time individually, but not collectively as a county. And I will end there because I know you're up against the clock on some other issues.
I do want to just wrap up real quick on behalf of the commission. What we didn't, I'm sorry, what we didn't talk about was the county tax. And Carl had a slide on the county tax, which seemed to be something that bothered Hingham. You actually paid a huge tax in the 80s. You pay a much smaller tax now. Plymouth County budget is smaller today than it was four years ago. That's not a smaller increase. That's a smaller budget. We have become as efficient as possible. We know of no other government agency that has remained the same and gone down four years in a row. It's something we're proud of. But your tax might not have gone down and that's a testament to your leadership. The county tax is the only tax that is not person-based that I'm aware of. It's real estate-based. So the entire real estate valuation of the county gets done on an annual basis. So you may jump greater than 2.5% if your real estate values jump greater than 2.5, jump greater in the pool. Some county towns have gone down in the past four years, which is a testament to where their real estate is. So I don't, I appreciate Ted's 5% projections. Hopefully, hopefully, they're greater than that because if they're greater than that, then your real estate is really climbing.
Thank you. I'll just ask if there are others who'd like to speak in just a second. I just wanted to say one thing. You know, if the question is, what can you do for us? I would sum up my concern, because I'm the one who brought this issue to the board, as what you can do for us is stop the bleeding. From our point of view, our tax of $114,000, that's two teachers. You need to show me that what I'm getting is more important to this town than two teachers. And that is a, that is a very high bar to jump. And we, I know what our pension liability is because Dan told me two years ago, three years ago.
It's gone up.
I'm sure it has. That's the whole point. It's going up all the time, but three years ago, when you told me, was $2 million. That's our share, that's Hingham's share of the former county employees who are in the.
Just the sheriff's department at the time.
Okay.
We were arguing about the sheriff's department. And what we were arguing about was that they were going to steal the jail, which they did.
Right, yes.
And nobody stood up and stopped it.
And we don't know what the OPEB liability is and I'm glad we're getting started on that so we know what that is. But the way we look at it in Hingham is we have a liability, we know we have it, we share that liability with the rest of the town. It's, for us, it's going to be a matter of dollars and cents. We'll look at what our share of the liability is. We'll look at what we're getting for it and we're going to, we're going to tone it up. So from my point of view, I look at the situation and the registry could easily pay for everything the county does.
And we agree with you.
If, if they were to stop taking the money. And so if you can arrange to stop the bleeding, then you'll get our attention a whole different way. So I'm just going to, I want the other people.
I understand that, but with regard to the bleeding, we are not bleeding more today. We are bleeding from wounds when we had 600 sheriff employees.
Yes, I understand.
We are not bleeding from the 97 employees we have today. The numbers are skewed and will eventually tread out over time. But we are not bleeding more today because employees that were hired in 1996 pay 11% to pension, which is a lot more than the backlog that we have that started at 2. So the problems that this commission and that the towns own, including Hingham, result from decades ago. Today, going forward, we can't incur bleeding like that. We won't survive. So I can tell you, we're not going to increase the bleeding. The bleeding that you're seeing is a wound that we're trying to stitch and we need help from the state to stitch that wound. And those bills have been filed and they have been filed, some of the bills by Garrett Bradley, who understands the issue and has worked extremely hard on it on the county, which means the town's behalf.
Could I ask, did you, are the bills in that packet?
Yep.
Okay, I was going to ask for that.
And we will be summoning all of you to come forward when the time comes.
Okay. Out there, there's more.
Oh, yeah. Can we have the young woman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, good.
So we're all set, right? We can, am I dismissed?
If you'd like, yes, yes.
Don't go far, though.
I have a question. Yeah, because I have a question for him. Hope I remember it.
You have a question?
I do. I'll wait till her.
Yeah, well, okay. We'll get back to you.
Hi, everyone. How are you? My name's Megan Conley. I work for the trustees of reservations here in Hingham as the education coordinator. Thank you for your time tonight. I've been with the trustees for about 10 years. And during that 10 years that I've been here, the trustees have made obviously a significant commitment to the education of the families of Hingham. Because of that, we are now, the town of Hingham has the highest saturation rate of trustees members in the entire state of Massachusetts. I know that Mr. Harris pointed out that we're a nonprofit and that we are not paying taxes to the town of Hingham. But what I would also just remind you is that we maintain over 500 acres in this town, including World's End Reservation, Whitney Thayer Reservation, Turkey Hill Reservation, Whitney Thayer Woods, which are, in my opinion, some of the real reasons why people choose Hingham to live in. There obviously a value to open space, but also just an underlying value of what makes Hingham such a special community. When I got to the trustees 10 years ago, our education programs were pretty limited. Our educational revenue at that time was $6,000 a year. The trustees is lucky to have me as an employee because a resident of Hingham, Dorothy Abbey, upon her death, left a million-dollar endowment so that there could be an educator to further the education and connection of specifically children in Hingham to the properties the trustees of reservations owns and maintains. My experience personally is that I would not be in the position, I would not have the job that I have today had I not had experience as a young child with 4-H specifically. My parents are both born and raised in Boston. My dad grew up in the projects, so they don't really know where they got me from. But going to 4-H camp as a child opened up an entire new world to me that I had never been exposed to. Again, when I started with the program in 2003, our educational revenue was $6,000. a year. As the one and only employee for the trustees that, that educates in this community, it's now to $55,000 a year. We are, on a regular basis, just turning children away from our programs because we cannot meet demand, which is something that, as the organization, we're trying to address. But also, just like the town, just like the town of, you know, just like Plymouth County Government, we have to be very frugal with our expenses. So, one of the things that I did upon starting with the trustees is I reached out to 4H. And initially, it was very controversial because, controversial for the trustees because there was no direct significant benefit to us financially. We, we do not receive money. When, when a child joins 4H in Hingham, we don't receive any financial benefit. The, the farm does not, the trustees of reservations does not. But if our overall goal is to truly commit to our communities and create the next generation of land stewards, we have to think outside of the box of how we're going to do this. So, 4H, we initiated a relationship with them. And since that time, currently, we have 55 families. And I use the word families because this is not the kind of program where you drop off your child and you drive away in the minivan, you have no, and you have no connection to. It's just not that kind of program. We have 55 families, and more than half of those families are Hingham residents. We have significant waiting lists. We have more families in Hingham than we can even, than we can even fit into our 4H programs. We have five clubs currently that educate and engage children as young as five, all the way up to 18. We are, we have a new club that's going to be starting this spring. And, you know, really, one of the things about 4H is that, I would argue that one of the reasons that people live in Hingham is because of the great school systems, there's a real dedication to giving youth the best opportunities they possibly can. And, you know, this is one of the options for families in this town. Not every child is going to play soccer. I know that there's a big investment in this community into like athletic fields, but that's not going to benefit every single family. And, you know, I cannot educate every child that wants to be at Wareham Farm alone, and that's why 4H is a natural partnership for us. I have parents that are volunteers, that utilize the property and the farm, you know, to, to run these 4H clubs. I would not be able to educate children to the level that they get through 4H. I interact with thousands of children, children a year through the trustees of reservations, but they're really just a surface interaction. In order for kids to be pulled into a deeper level, we've utilized 4H for that capacity. Now, the thing is, is that the trustees see this as an advantage because the liability of these children, when they are doing things that I'm not going to trust an average kid off the street who has no experience to potentially handle livestock, because I don't want the liability, I don't want the, you know, it's, it's, it definitely is a liability and that's a concern. They are under an umbrella with 4H's insurance policy that, again, that assists us at the trustees of reservations and allows these kids to have these opportunities. For this reason, you know, people are, are flocking to our organization, they're flocking to our farm. Again, I have more kids in summer camp, after-school programs, than I can possibly maintain on my own. And everybody wants to know, how do I possibly handle and educate all these thousands of kids? And one of the ways that I do it is through the support of 4H. Again, insurance liability, quarry checks, sorry checks. I can feel confident when I have a child on my property with a 4H volunteer that this, this is someone who's been completely vetted. And I think that, you know, when you really take into consideration, you know, what Hingham is benefiting from having this one program, I mean, I would argue that it's, it's, it's a greater value than the entire $125,000 that you guys are paying as a town to the county altogether. I mean, obviously, I'm an educator, so I feel that way. But, you know, I know that when we, when we talk about it as just like one farm, just, you know, one place, we are feeding, we have over 100 people in our CSA, we are raising animals. And I think one of the things is that people have this, like this, I, I'm not from, from Hingham originally, but I'm from Danvers, Mass., which has, you know, experienced a loss of a lot of farms and a lot of development. And a lot of people, they want to hold on to that agricultural history that's really valuable, which, which has kind of helped to shape what Hingham, Hingham has always been. I hear it from people all the time. I had these experiences growing up, I want my kids to have these experiences. And I would advocate that, you know, cutting a program like 4H does exactly the opposite. People are not going to protect and stand up and value something that they are not educated about. And our open space, our agricultural history is going to fall victim to that. So, just wanted to share that with you guys.
Thank you very much. I'm going to go out on a limb and say that, on behalf of my colleagues, I bet they are as impressed as I am with the information that you've just given us about 4H clubs in Hingham, and I really appreciate it.
Sure.
And thank you for sharing that with us. I'd just like to point out, though, that in parts of this, the Commonwealth, where there are no counties, there are still 4H clubs. How do, so...
There are.
So, that is what, we don't have time to investigate that today.
We do.
But that is what we would be looking at, is that I don't think there's a, there's a 100% absolute connection between, are there 4H clubs? There must be a county, et cetera. So, that's what we'll be looking at.
There are. And I, and I would advocate, because I'm actually from Essex County originally, and...
Okay, wait, what, what, you can only have one person speaking at a time.
I was going to say that, I'm, I'm from Essex County originally, and I, like I say, I, I grew up in 4H. And then when, when the 4H program was cut and they lost their, their funding up there, the person who is their 4H educator is now based out of Wallfam. And so, the person who's in Wallfam has very little connection to the, what the community needs and how to help them. And we're experiencing the same issue because since the success of the trustees of reservation programs at Wareham Farm, they've been copied by other trustees of reservations farms. They, they're, they're literally copying our model because it's been so successful. The problem is, is that up in the North Shore, up at Appleton Farms in Ipswich, they don't have an educator, they don't have the support that we have. So, they're basically almost like a, an independently-run group. So, they actually came down to us for different kinds of training because they don't get that kind of support from their own leader, and then they're not able to grow the way that we are. I mean, literally, a volunteer will come out of the woodwork and will contact Valerie, who's able, like I say, to go through that entire process. Well, you know what? Valerie's able to turn them around very quickly because she can meet that person at the farm, walk them through, walk with me. If I have a person who's based out of Wallfam, who has no idea about what Hingham is, what I have to offer that person, you know, or if that person, because probably what would happen is if we lose Valerie as our educator, then that same person who's out of Wallfam would now be taking on us and the entire Plymouth County. Well, guess what? The people of Hingham aren't going to be getting the benefit that they're getting now. So, I would just advocate that.
I want to thank her.
But, wait, here's what we're...
I want to thank you also because we know a number of kids that have been in your programs, and we've actually gone down to the Marshfield Fair to watch them show their animals. And it really is quite impressive because these kids do not come from a farm-type of background, and they've just done exceptionally.
Okay. We're running over our time here. Here's what we're going to do. Somebody back there has something to say about 4H clubs. I need you to come up to the microphone and identify yourself, and then we'll get to your question that you were going to put down.
Okay, before I forget it.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
I am Valerie Shell, Plymouth County 4H educator. I am a county employee. And I just want to agree with everything that Meg had said. And exactly what she said at the end is, they are based in Wallfam, and that one educator covers three counties. And if Hingham, the only reason I'm here tonight is because if Hingham were to leave Plymouth County, you would be in one of those two counties that don't have the 4H support. They don't have the educators that can go out and support the programs. They are left out on their own, and these kids would not, absolutely, I can guarantee you, would not have the quality of education that they have now.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Your question for Plymouth County Commissioner.
Dan.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
You just...
Can you come up here, Dan? They can't hear you at home.
Can you, and...
I'm sure I can be loud enough.
Now, let's get a microphone on him. I think he should speak up. Dan, can you provide us a list of potential useful services that you provide? The one thing that caught my ear was the bulk purchasing. I know our DPW is involved in a bulk purchasing group. For the life of me, I can't remember which, after all the years of sitting through discussions. But if, if you could, and have that...
Post-meeting, I'll be happy to give you a list of everything that we do purchases on. And because it, you know, we don't, we offer to the towns, we don't front on the towns that don't want it, but we offer to all the towns. I'll make sure that you get a list of everything that we're doing. One of the things I, I want you to really encourage is, it's really taken off, is the police vehicles. We got into a great debate a couple of years ago on the police vehicles, and what, what we found out is communities that buy two vehicles or more a year are saving a tremendous amount going through Plymouth County and not going to the state bid list. So, I will get you a list of all of those. I'd also like to get you a list of the liabilities prior to the sheriff and post-sheriff, because I really want you to know, you're not increasing your, your, your bleeding. We have a common problem that we need to all work on, and that is to get rid of the, the wound of the past. And I'd like it if you would join us in helping us get rid of that wound. But this county commission doesn't have the ability to continue to bleed, it's just not that type of an organization. We don't have that many employees.
Is one of the bills that you all have filed to transfer the OPEB to, like wherever the sheriffs went, the OPEB from their organization?
That is correct.
Good.
Which is a big, big, big number. And it should go because they took the, they took the house and left us with the mortgage.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we, we are, colleague Bruce asks, we're quite a bit over our agenda time.
No, let Kathy, it's important I hear from Kathy.
Okay.
Well, and then I think Ellen should be able to speak.
Ellen should be able to speak as well, yeah, so...
I'm going to get very free.
Okay, Kathy, could you come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself? So, people at home, they get mad at us when they speak into the microphone.
Okay, Catherine Salisbury, Hingham resident. The League of Women Voters, as you know, is doing a study about Plymouth County. My remarks are not, we have not started, we've started, but we have completed this study. So, this has nothing to do with the League, this is my personal comment. And that is, a lot of this information that they're talking about, I'm hoping that they will make available to Ted and to the board, and then indirectly to us. It'll be, become public information. It's been a problem getting this information. I know Carl's had a lot of trouble getting this kind of financial information, and this is, this will be critical to our study, to know exactly. Someone asked, I guess you asked, validating, validating? We need exact numbers. We need the copies, the audits. We need all this kind of stuff. I do agree that the problem, the state has created a lot of this problem, like by leading, leaving these enormous liabilities, taking the sheriff's department, the House Corrections, and leaving all this mess behind. A lot of that is a political solution with the General Court, which, you know, has nothing to do with the town of Hingham or any of the 27 municipalities. I would caution you, I would point out that there is House 1831 before the General Court now, which has the proposed charter from it, you know, attached to it. And I urge you to read the charter, to see exactly what it says. And you might consider as an interim move, taking a position on House 1831. If you decide that the resolution and that path is too premature, or too adventurous, or whatever, there is an alternate way, and that is to put your oar in and write a letter to your legislators saying either you're favor of it or not in favor of it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Please welcome Ellen Allen, Chairman of the Plymouth County Advisory Board.
Thank you, Laura. I'm here sort of with two hats on. One is as the Chair of the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and I'm sorry to see Laura leave as my Vice Chair, but I, we've, we've recruited someone I think will take it on. And I'm also here wearing the hat of a Norwell Selectman, so your neighboring town, and do what you do. And I actually find sometimes there's a little conflict between the two. But I'll try to be quick and just hit some high points that maybe haven't been discussed. In terms of what we value in Norwell from the county, some of these services that are provided to other towns, we all, we also don't use. But certainly, we think the Registry of Deeds is terrific, and we love having the Rockland Satellite. It doesn't affect our taxes or our budgets, it affects our citizens. And it's a service they get really outside of, of their taxes. On the courthouses, it's awfully nice for us that sometimes our policemen are getting paid overtime to come to Hingham instead of all the way to Plymouth or Wareham. And again, along the lines of something that's good for your citizens, but not affecting your town budget. I would think if the Hingham courthouse were to close, that that would infect negatively, impact negatively, the business that's being drawn into the area. You know, maybe fewer people go to eat at Stars, or, you know, those sorts of things. And it would be inconvenient for our community if, if Hingham were to close. However, wearing my legislative branch hat for the county, it would not make sense financially for the county to continue to run a courthouse for the state in Hingham if you were to, to drop out, because they want to get rid of one anyway, and we could redeploy that asset, you know, lease it to a commercial, to commercial entities, and, and we'd get more revenue from it. So, you know, that's the kind of thing where my different hats have different perspectives. I think perhaps my favorite thing that the county does for us is it runs the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. And we're both in it, in our communities. It is run extremely well. The premiums did not go up at all this year, they're not going up at all next year. It's likely they won't go up at all the year after that. I don't know of another health joint purchasing group, or certainly the GIC, is not seeing zero growth in the premiums. I think if you just did a one or 2% increase in what you're going to pay for health insurance as a town on your budget, it would vastly exceed what you're paying to be a part of the county on your assessment. I know it would for Norwell.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the Mayflower Health Group is not a function of the county. It's run by the member towns, and it contracts with the county for the accounting, which you...
It's administered by the county.
Yeah, well...
I think some, I think a lot of, I think quality of the Mayflower Group reflects the administration and the leadership from the county treasurer. I, I don't think it's separate from that. That's my opinion, and I do weigh in a lot on, on that matter.
So, what you're saying, Ellen, the question would be if we were to withdraw, but not from the Mayflower Group, there may be a different fee that we might pay as a result.
I, I would certainly think so. Yeah, because otherwise, we're subsidizing you, and that's sort of the whole exercise you're doing. I'm puzzled that you would think it's a good financial solution for your town, because it certainly wouldn't be for Norwell to opt out. If, if we were to opt out, we would immediately have to pay our share of the unfunded pension liability and the unfunded OPEB liability. I checked with the county treasurer, just the unfunded pension liability for Hingham right now would be about $1,009,000. And of course, the OPEB liability would be more than that. If you look statewide, it's usually multiples. So, you either have a cherry sheet charge back that represents less than, like 1/100th percent of your budget or something, or you pay out probably $4,000, $5,000,000 in a lump some odd once. That puzzles me. It's up to you. That may make sense for you, it would certainly not make sense for us.
We deal with OPEB, and we had to take the, bite the bullet on the big bill associated with it, and that's the, one of the concerns.
I'm talking about your share of the counties, because if you step out of the county, then you have to pay the, the county share. The county actually took a, a very big step towards OPEB last year. And it can't be quantified because they haven't done the actuary report yet the way we've been doing them. But they were able to switch the, the premium split with all their employees from 9010 to 8020. And I know that sounds ridiculous to you because you're a 50/50 community, but for those of us that didn't do the right thing back in 1962 or, or whatever, when you make a 10% change, shift, that has a huge impact on an OPEB liability, as opposed to changing, you know, putting money into it. If you can reduce what you're offering employees over time, the calculation actuarially is a big change. If you throw money at it, it, it doesn't make nearly the same impact.
I'm not going to say it does make sense for us to do that, and we haven't done the analysis.
Right.
But the way it would make sense is, we would bond it. We wouldn't just pay, you know, $4,500,000 or whatever it is. And the liability would stop accruing. And that, that is, you know, we, there are still employees.
Right. Yep. And it's interesting you say that, because one of the pieces of legislation that's been filed that I'm a particular fan of is for the count, for the pension board to be, for the pension fund to issue a pension obligation bond. for the pension fund, to issue a pension obligation bond. That would basically seal up that issue for the retirement board. And for Norwell, that would mean that most years, you know, when the market's down, you're still going to see some variation. But we would be able to redeploy that to OPEB, or frankly, anything else we would want to redeploy it to. And it would also, you know, kind of fix that problem for the county, make it a reasonable number going forward, so.
So again, I'm not going to assert that it necessarily, that it does make sense, but that is the, that's the background on which it's worth investigating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, I want to go on and on. I do think, right now, we have these new commissioners, and you know Laura firsthand, that this is a big improvement over what we've had. And-
A round of applause for the new commissioners.
Yeah, absolutely. And, for two of them, except the chairman, no.
Is that a motion?
I don't, I-
Would you say that?
Absolutely, absolutely. Some of these things would have been possible to get started sooner if we had had this group of commissioners. And some of what's being done now at the state legislature, with the bills being filed, with the testimony that the same group of people are making up there, I think has a real chance to put the county not just on sound, but in fact, really solid footing to move forward and to do more for us. I mean, some of the things we'd like to see, a veterans agent on a countywide basis, perhaps doing the triennial assessment that we do in our community, may be getting that done on a group basis, some economies of scale. I don't want to open up the can of worms of the emergency dispatch area, but the economies of scale for dispatch centers in the country that are on a county basis instead of a four-town basis are significant. What I kind of would hate to see is, what I'd like to ask you to do is, give these commissioners a year, or 18 months, and see what they can do. If you're pursuing abolish the county, secede from the county, that's going to hurt those efforts. And that's going to impact the other 26 communities. And if we give them a chance, then we'll all know whether it makes sense to go along these lines or not. I think to have that skeptical, fighting against it voice up at the State House is going to confuse the matter, and it's going to hurt the efforts for the other 26 communities. So I'd ask you maybe to just pause on this, and give them that time, and we'll see what, if it can get fixed, and what else they can do for us. For us, it's worth it. It's a small number in our, in our budget, and we think, we think we get what we pay for now, but we certainly think we can get even more going forward. So, sorry to bounce around so much, but thank you for listening.
That's very helpful, thank you very much.
Very good.
Last figure on this topic will be, this evening, will be Treasurer, County Treasurer, Tom O'Brien. And then we're just going to have, we're going to-
Well, I was going to ask, Madam Chairman, and it's certainly up to the board. You know, my four-hour presentation certainly, I'm kidding, could certainly be consolidated to an hour and a half, no. You have people here for hearings. You'd mentioned that, you know, maybe at a later date. I'm happy to come in, probably condense a lot of what you've heard. There are still some gaps. There's still some faulty assumptions that I'd like to address. I'm happy to do it now, but it's certainly not going to be able to be done in three or four or five minutes.
Well, this is certainly not the last discussion that we're going to have on this, so maybe we'll just put you on the agenda for the next discussion.
It's entirely up to you.
Okay.
Maybe by the time Tom comes back, which is a very generous offer from you, we will have the information that Dan will provide, and all the information we've asked for, and we'll probably be able to ask you more questions. So you might even have to bring Dan back.
Let me, let me just-
Never vote on it.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Is that the charter commission is represented by one of the members. The Chair wasn't able to make it, and I'm not sure of his schedule. It might be important to hear his testimony. I'll defer mine to a later date, so you can hear what he has to say.
I don't mind, you know, doing that now, but I'm also available at a future date.
Okay, Mr. Westbury can come back. Okay, well, we'll just have another free-for-all on-
When you come back, if I may, Madam Chairman, when you come back, Sandra mentioned a vision. You went over that very quickly. Where you're headed is important to us, because you teed up in that discussion regionalization, which is also important to us. So I'd like to hear where you think, after 100 days of experience, I recognize, but where you think you're headed, because that would be important for us in our consideration. Okay?
Okay, well, thank you very much for offering to come back, since we couldn't, didn't have time to hear everybody. I really appreciate it. I'd like to thank everyone who came from far away to be part of this discussion. We really appreciate it. Round of applause for all the current elected officials, who I think are all grappling with the same things we are. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for the new commissioners, who are in all the bills you've filed and trying to fix it.
Yes, thank you. So we are at this-
Do you want me to try and-
You're going to go into the session now?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want me to try and make the motion?
Okay. What, this motion?
To move us into executive, from memory.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I move, we enter into executive session to discuss real estate matters, that doing so in an open session would have, would be detrimental to the negotiations of said real estate.
And we will be returning-
We will be returning to open session.
I'm going to estimate in 20 minutes.
20 minutes? In 20 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Second.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
Are you in favor?
Aye.
I am in favor. See you in 20 minutes. Welcome back. Thank you for joining us. This is the Hingham Board of Selectmen, and we are returning to open session after having an executive session. And we have a few votes to take, and the last item on our agenda is the annual review of the town administrator's performance. And just to let everybody know what the process is that we have gone through for this, and what we are going to do next, the town administrator's contract calls for a 360-degree review, followed by a review by the Board of Selectmen. And then there is a portion of the, of the town administrator's contract, which makes available additional merit pay, up to an additional $15,000, for accomplishments that are above and beyond the ordinary, based on a list which the town administrator has provided to us, and we will, that part of the, the discussion being part of contract negotiations will take place in executive session, but the review takes place in public session. Now, the 360-degree review was conducted by, as called for in the contract, the Chairman of the Advisory Committee and a Citizen-at-Large, who was selected jointly by me and the town administrator, and then three department heads, who, whose identity is confidential, and the review that they have done is confidential to protect them. And so we have the results of all of those reviews that were done, and also the town administrator's self-evaluation, which we have been using as a basis for information to add to our experience, to make our evaluation, which we're going to do now. So, but first, I'm going to present a summary of the 360-degree review, and then we'll, we'll have our discussion. In the questionnaire that we handed out to the individuals who are doing the 360-degree review, there were, there were 48 separate questions on which to measure the town administrator's performance. And it was to be measured on a scale of 1 to 5. 5 was outstanding, 4 is strong performance, 3 is satisfactory, 2 needs improvement, and 1 is unacceptable. And I've just told you who was involved in it, so there, that makes total of 240 measurements of the town administrator's performance. Out of those 240 measures, no one rated the town administrator's performance as needing improvement or as unacceptable on any measure. 96% of all of the measures were outstanding or strong performance, and 4% were satisfactory. So I did mean to, let me just speak about what the areas that were discussed were. There were nine ways to measure the town administrator on leadership and decision-making. There were six metrics on working with boards and other committees, 5 on planning and organization, 7 on communication, 7 on community relations, 5 on job knowledge, and 9 on financial management. And then, in addition, evaluation of his performance on the, on the Board of Selectmen's five goals for the year. So those are, those are the areas on which these 240 measures were made, and as I just said, 96% of all of the measures were either outstanding or strong performance. And just to pick some of the comments to share with the public, Ted works hard on handling controversy constructively by reducing tensions, which is not always easy, because of different perspectives, personalities, and priorities of individuals on a number of boards. In financial management, Ted's creative options for problem resolution allow choices and are a guide for priority setting. Ted is a pleasure to work with and for. He is always available to provide direction, advice, and a smile. One of his many strong points is helping to deal with employee issues. I appreciate Ted's involvement with our state delegation, as well as the PRIM Board. I appreciated his leadership as part of the Mayflower Group. All of these roles benefit the town. The PRIM is the, is the retirement investing agency that, that we have our retirement money with. The Mayflower Group is our, is the entity where we have, are the town's health insurance through. And so those are activities that he takes on outside of Town Hall. Ted coordinates well with other boards and is a good listener. Ted is an incredibly knowledgeable and progressive town administrator. His consistent support of regionalization is noteworthy and far-sighted. Several reviewers commented positively on Ted's leadership at department head meetings, in that they run very well, and everyone has a chance to speak on whatever concerns them. Also, Ted's method of evaluating employees came in for appreciation. Areas identified for future development included better communication with the media and with the town at large, for example, better advertising for the town forum, among other items. Also, the Board of Selectmen's goals of improving asset management and town-wide study of fields need further work in the coming year. The town administrator's performance was rated very highly on the Board's other three goals, which are study of the possible purchase of the water company, development of tax relief proposals, and progress on commercial development possibilities in South Hingham. Overall, the 360-degree review presents a highly positive view of the town administrator's performance in every area without exception. So that is what the people who are not the Board of Selectmen had to say about town administrator's performance. And now, we have also done our own evaluations, and the time has come for us to share those. So, would you like to?
I'm the new kid. Start with Bruce. This is the first time I'm doing this, so.
Well, we're curious.
Yeah.
You are the new kid, that's why-
Partly because of that.
Because you are the new kid. That would be helpful.
All right. Well, as the new kid, on leadership and decision-making, I rated him satisfactory. And that was because this is the first time we've had a transition from one selectman to another, and I'll do it again. I'm sure the second time, he's going to do differently, and I will be happy to make fours and fives. It's not been as smooth as I had hoped, but it's been very good. So on that, boards and other relations, I, again, perfectly satisfactory. Planning and organizing, satisfactory, and meets deadlines and schedules better than satisfactory. Communication was mostly fours and some threes. On community relations, he really is quite good there. And then on job knowledge, threes, and I had a couple of questions that I don't think I, it doesn't, it doesn't apply to me. And then for financial management, he's obviously ace is there. I thoroughly enjoyed working with him when I was Chair of Advisory and working on capital, and he really does know his stuff. On evaluation of goals and objectives, for the first three, I rated him highly, the Aquarian Study, Tax Relief, and South Hingham Industrial Park. In the final two, I was disappointed. And those were my two. So, beyond that, all in all, I think he's done a good job, satisfactory job at least.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. This is my second time doing this particular review, if I recall, my, my memory serves me right. And I just did the quick math. I, I went through what you just did in percentage of the, of the 48 categories, and I had about 94% outstanding and excellent, and just 6%. There were two issu, one issue which I hadn't observed, and that was the issue of, I don't do agendas, you do agendas.
That was mine, too.
Yeah, so I can't do that. But, and then the comments, if I may, the thing I've observed is that he continues to grow under the leadership category into the position. And two examples under that, he leads by example and by setting high standards, and he was instrumental in helping us get the Water Study Committee as far as he did. And he does recommend alternatives in his decision-making process, particularly as we went through the very long process regarding tax relief. So I thought you offered alternatives for consideration, and that was, we got to where we wanted to go. One comment I had, and this was an observation, that the continuous pressure under which you have to operate on a day-by-day basis would challenge many other people, but you seemed to respond to that quite well. In terms of boards and committees, I sampled a few on my own as to what their observations were, and their observations are, they continually complement you, and those were fours and fives. For planning and organizing, I think he, he has made effective use of his staff, and the one suggestion which I'll make is that he, he needs to, as he and I have personally discussed, to work more closely with some of the staff and develop personal development improvement plans, because that gets at an issue about his time availability. And time availability, he's got a lot of responsibility, particularly the fact that he serves in two roles, as town administrator and Chief Financial Officer. And we need to solve that separation at some point, and Ted and I have talked about that. And I want to make sure that his continued availability is, is for all of us, because he gets there first by continuing to focus on maintaining good health. So that, that's a suggestion. And he needs to sleep, and that's my father image, turning in.
And not sleep in the office on a cot.
That's right. No calling at 4:00 in the morning or typing emails, that's not allowed. I think on the communication issue, the thing I think all of us would say, it's this time management, if you're very busy, and I would tell you, the three town administrators I've had the ability to work with, that is an issue. That's a result of the structure of the town and how you're spread. But I, that is the issue that restricts you. And on community relations, what was interesting to me, I had a substitute for him once on a visit to Linden Ponds, and when I walked up there, as I walked through the hallway, people turned to me and said, oh, you're Ted's replacement. So I said, that means they know he is, and I know he goes up there on a, on a regular basis. And then, in terms of job knowledge, I have another suggestion. When Ted became town administrator, he stopped taking, if you recall, his advanced degree, so that he could dedicate himself to getting the town. And I think it would be to his advantage to go back to that, and we should, and by the time management and the delegation, that's how you get the time to do that. Financial management, it's been said, that's the one area where I give you outstanding. And when I talk to some of your peers in the neighboring towns, which I have done, they compliment you in that area, because they always turn to you, they tell me at their meetings when that comes up. In terms of the evaluation, I know the, the first, I agree with, the first three goals were very well designed, and the others were, the last two were satisfactory. So that is, and I do have suggestions for long-term, but we'll get to that.
Okay. Okay. And Ted, I think, knows how I feel about his performance, because I tell him frequently. But to share with the public, I think I've been in this role now for six years, and had the opportunity to talk to other selectmen, meet other town administrator, hear stories from other towns. And I feel that Ted's job performance overall is superlative, especially when you compare him with his peers, which is especially remarkable, given that he's only a couple of years into this job. So imagine how he's going to be in a decade. The areas where I felt, I feel he's, he's growing in the leadership and decision-making area. I feel like that's working out well, and the comments from the 360 really reflected that well. I feel that the, the area of boards and other, other boards and committees' relations is one where he really excels, because he is always aware of, in any area, which is the board and which is the committee that is going to have to weigh in on this and make sure that that group is involved, that, and sometimes, sometimes even sitting in our seat, I tend to forget, oh, yeah, this, we have to, we have to talk to this committee or this board about this area before we act in that area, and Ted never lets me forget about that. The area, as Ted knows, where I feel like the town really needs to do better is on community relations, is on public relations for the town, for the things that we do. And we have talked about this at length. And we need to develop, I'm not saying I think Ted should do this, because Ted has enough to do. But we need to develop more within the Board of Selectmen's office, the capacity to be out in front of issues, let the town know what we're doing that is good and to the benefit of the town, let the town know what's coming down the pike that might be of concern to us. There are a million ways to do that in this 21st century day, and I, and I- And I have to say that, you know, I was surprised to learn that you're doing a monthly program at Linden Ponds. Of course, I don't get the cable TV from Linden Ponds, because I don't live at Linden Ponds. Have you considered getting the disc from that and giving it to H-Cam so the rest of us can see it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, it's a no-brainer. And, but I realize that all your brain is occupied elsewhere.
No, actually, I've thought of talking to H-Cam about doing a show with them.
Or you could just get the one you did.
Just take the tape over.
Don't do it all over again.
Sometimes the Linden Ponds one is focused on the issues that they have specifically there.
You know what? That's okay.
Okay.
You know?
Content?
Yeah. And so.
Yeah, and the way they do that, to Laura's point, they sometimes ask you what else is going on, and you can bring that in the discussion.
You've got to see the Linden Ponds for a resider.
No.
I think what would be great is the rest of the town would understand how Linden Ponds is the town.
That's a very good idea.
And what they consider as issues, because it is different. We have a lot of friends up there.
Yeah, everybody can find out when everybody's interested.
Right, they see the world a little differently.
Yes, good point, good point, Irma.
So, we need, there needs to be more thinking like that in the office of the Board of Selectmen, is how can we take advantage of all the various opportunities that we have, hopefully without working too much harder, to really be proactive and not so reactive, like, oh, there's something hit us in the face, we have to get the word out about this. But think ahead and let people know what we're doing that is valuable to the town. So, that's the area that I really feel like we need some improvement. And I was of the same approach about the five goals, that there's a good deal more to be done on two of the goals, and the other three goals have been moving along fine. So that is my evaluation. Now, did you have recommendations for going forward that you wanted to share?
Surely. No, no, I think I said them, but I just, since they asked to do it, I, let's see. Now, the biggest problem with this, as I was writing this, my wife said, "You're not going to be able to read your own handwriting." And that is still the case. So I think one is important to get back to school. I think that's a good outside look at, given the course you're taking. And when I watched you in the first few years, when you were still in the accounting organization, you kept coming back with the exposure it gave you from how, a different way to look at it. And now that you're in this job, that's most important, because it keeps you abreast of that. I think working on those staff members' direct reports who need development, that will help you develop the time, as I said, that you need to get by making them step up to the plate and have a plan for the few that need that. And then, and then I think the other last issue of suggestion was the delegation of your time. You know, you're starting to do that now, as, you know, having certain people represent you so that you don't have to be there all the time. And that helps them grow, and I think it helps you do the other things for the other people. So, that's my suggestions.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to share?
The finish is MBA, definitely. And on working with some of the staff members, that was a good one, Bruce, because I had that one as well, to, they're going to follow you. And they're going to follow you for one or two reasons. They have to or they want to. And you want them to get it so that they want to follow you. But also having them, help develop them. I think that would be great. They're good people. This building is full of good people. Some younger than others in their position, not age. But I think, I think setting the example, too. And then in a lot of personnel issues, stepping back and looking at the bigger picture, not just the personnel problem, but the bigger picture and the impact on the organization. That's.
Good.
Well, I'm going to be perfectly honest and say that I'm concerned that a return to graduate school may bring on more pneumonia, considering everything else you have to do. But I suppose, I could imagine, you know, you getting to a point where you've got this job a little bit more under control than you did in your first year, and that it's more conceivable that you could handle that. I do worry about, you know, overwork. I always do. Because there's no end to this job, you know? So Bruce is right, Irma's right. The key is to develop your staff so that they can do some of this instead of you. And hopefully you can go back to graduate school. That would be great. Okay, so at this point, what happens is the documents that we have used to develop our evaluation become part of the public record. And I would encourage all of us to sit down with Ted, you know, in our regular meetings and go over it in more detail, if there's anything else we'd like to talk about or share.
Okay.
And then, then we're going to go into executive session to discuss the merit pay section in contract negotiations. And before we do that, however, we have a couple of votes we have to take in public session, so let us do that.
Can I take one out of order?
Sure.
Because I have to thank Ted for it. At the harbor development meeting jointly with the trustees, Joni Williams and Roger Fernandez got together, and she had not put in the reserve fund transfer for sand for the beach. And if anyone wants to go down to the bathing beach, normally we have to move a little sand. We're basically filling the Grand Canyon this year. So Joni and I threw ourselves on Ted's mercy. And with Sue Nickerson's help, allow me to make this motion. I'm going to recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the bathing beach R and M grounds in the amount of $30,000.
Good idea. Excellent. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yes?
I'll just report that I had Roger Fernandez review the numbers. Randy Sylvester also reviewed them. You know, Roger feels that, you know, this is probably, you know, the minimum that we need to do down there. We are also applying for federal reimbursement under the February 7th and 8th storm, if we get federal reimbursement for that. As you know, it's being decided right now, and we'll, you know, see if we can include that in that, in those applications.
It's a huge amount of sand, and this is, this is not going to take care of everything, but it gets us started, because the season's upon us.
And I just want to say, it doesn't occur every year. It was a bad year. Some years, we can just simply take the sand from, it sort of shifts. It goes down to the ramp, the boat ramp, and then we bring it back, and it goes down again next year. And sometimes we supplement, and it usually isn't a reserve fund transfer, because we can find that money within the budget. But it was just, as you can imagine from this winter, it was just too much.
Awful.
Question.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ted, before I make the motion on the reserve fund transfer for the dispatch account, perhaps you've done a lot of work in this area, so perhaps you could educate the public on this item.
So, we've done some work in this area, specifically in the area of finance, but we have more to do. I've committed to you folks that, to do a full review and audit from inception to today, or to the present time, when we complete the work. And I've presented it to the board, I've discussed it with the chairman. I think there's a consensus that we do want to do that and get that out to the public. We haven't been able to get to it within the last two months, because we've been dealing with, the primary issues we have are the union negotiations. And each of the managers who are managing this also have certain responsibilities. Hall had, Hall had a number of issues this, the last two months with the weather-related issues that were a little more detailed than, significant than us, along with a sewer issue. So, we're going to discuss bringing Powers and Sullivan, which is the audit firm for the Regional Dispatch Inn, to take a look at how we spent the capital money and where it went, so we can clearly identify that. They've already done that, some of that work in their first audit from last year, because they had to allocate fixed assets. And then the other part about it is, you know, what did the first year of operations look like? What did the second year? Because it was a straddled year, where the first year, their fiscal year included really Hingham and Hall coming in, and the second fiscal year included all four towns in the system. So, we're still committed to doing that, and we will have, hopefully, some preliminary numbers within the next couple of months on that. And then we'll supplement that with the close of the end of the year. So we're not going to wait until June. The audit will take place mostly during the summer, but we're not going to wait for that. We'll start forthwith on that. The other thing I did was, I asked the folks at the Dispatch Center, Al Wallace and Maureen Shirkus, to work with Sue Nickerson, the Hingham Town Accountant, but is also the town accountant of the Regional Dispatch Center, to, and that's the spreadsheet you see on the back of the transfer, to compare and contrast where we were and where we are. There's, they're unaudited, so I don't want this to be your, you know, this is not substituting for the audit comments I made a second ago. But what they've shown is that the fiscal 11 costs that we incurred for dispatch were not simply the $480,000 that we budgeted within dispatch services, but in actuality, $578,000 that were spread around several budget items, health insurance, retirement, OPEB, Medicare taxes, expenses, technology that was included in the police budget, air cards in the police budget, and computer-aided dispatch maintenance that was in the police budget. All of those expenses were removed from those budgets. And so if you roll those forward, you'll see that the change in cost structure from 11 to 13 is about 5.2%. Now, that's a 5.2% increase. And I know one of the challenges we're having here in Hingham, which is a little different than the challenges the other three towns are having, is what the expectations were. So that'll be a little difficult for me to change your expectations, since I didn't set your expectations. And the other three managers have the same concern, because they set expectations entirely different in their communities. And the message there was, there weren't going to be significant savings, there were going to be a better product. And as we grew the center and added more people, there would be potentially more savings. That's not what you were told here. You were told that you would save roughly 50% of the dollar. And if you recall back in 2010 as your finance director, I said no, that you would not save that kind of money. And you haven't. I do think there's more, you know, there are more savings to be mined over time here. For example, we can capture the revenue that the state police get currently if we start answering calls from mobile cell phones, cell phones, rather. But the board is less inclined to go forward with that in the first year, because we feel that before we start doing that, we want to make sure that we're comfortable with the quality control issues of the existing center. And, you know, we've heard some, you know, some significant evidence that says that we have some issues there, but we also have heard some really great evidence that say the community's getting a much greater product than they got before. Yeah, just yesterday, we received a notice of a life-threatening, a life-saving event in Norwell, where the medical dispatching capabilities of the dispatchers, which did not occur in the previous, you know, each of the towns did not have the dispatchers trained on that emergency medical response capability. And the dispatcher was on the line, and we're going to bring this person in here for you later, to recognize, because they deserve recognition, someone had a heart attack. And this person helped the person making the call administer CPR and brought that person back to life before the ambulances got there. That person probably wouldn't be with us today if the dispatch didn't do this. So, that's a big success story. I mean, for me, that's about as big a success story as you can get, saving someone's life. So we need to focus more on that, and that's some of the work we have to do. And that's about it.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. So I will make a motion that we recommend a transfer from the reserve fund to the dispatch account in the amount of $83,016.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to ratify a contract with Beals &amp; Thomas Incorporated for permitting, design, and procurement services for the Whitney Wharf Pedestrian Bridge in the amount of $65,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion to sign an employment contract with Stephen Becker for a three-year term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Does anybody have anything else they would like to report? Selectmen report?
No.
Before we go into executive session?
Sure, just two quick items. The Community Preservation Committee met this week, and the only issue we anticipate that might be an item for discussion is the issue of Thaxter Park and the rehabilitation and work that's there. And I've had conversation with Representative Bradley and Representative Murphy to say that this is an issue that the Board of Selectmen, coupled with our state-elected representatives, should continue to address, because this is a state-managed agency, and our inability to fund some of their requests is prohibited by statute. So, just so that you're, that's a good thing. And then, yesterday, I had a meeting with the Hingham Development Industrial Commission, updating them on Article 22, and the need for, we have three major areas to look at, making sure that the South Shore Industrial Park and their wastewater treatment efforts are addressed by Article 22, coupled with anything that the Derby Shops may need. And then what other opportunities might there be for us? So, they have accepted that task, and that's something, obviously, dependent on town meeting successfully voting Article 22. That's all.
Two thank yous. I want to thank everybody who responded to my inquiry about the guns at the harbor, and to the three people that sent me emails that I saw when I left the Selectmen's meeting, got home about 11:00. So, thank you. We will report back on what we have found. A lot of people have responded to both the TV and the newspaper, but we will report back. And I think we are going to be able to identify, we know what they are now, thanks to you all. And we'll, we are hot on the track of finding out how they got there. So, thank you. And also want to congratulate Chief Pereno, all the members of the Police Department, and our high school teams. And if I've forgotten anybody, I apologize upfront for their great performance at the Dare Basketball Game on Sunday. And I want to report that the chief can really move up and down that basketball court. So, thank you all for participating, and I hope we made some money.
Very good.
I would just like to let you guys know that we've set the Selectmen's Golf Tournament in support of the Fourth of July for June 3rd, Monday. And it'll be a shotgun-style scramble tournament.
What's that?
What that means is that you will all start on a specific hole, not the first hole. And for those who might not feel that their golf game is up to speed, it's a best ball tournament, so all four tee off, you play the best shot. And you take another shot from where that best shot was, and you all place your ball adjacent to that, and on you go. Which is probably why most of the scorers that win this game are, win the tournament are par or below, since you have four shots at everything.
But that doesn't imply that you hit the ball.
Well, it's a good time by all, but right now, what we need is, we need foursomes to join. We've had a great response from the business community. A number of gold sponsors have come forth. The committee that has been working on this, the Fourth of July Committee, and Terry Gronnahan is a private citizen, has offered to help and has been working on it, too. We are in discussions with a couple of companies to be the platinum sponsor of the overall event. And so we are getting great feedback from them. What we really need to make sure of is that, you know, when we have all the sponsorship, we actually have enough golfers to run the tournament. So, if you could get your word out, and if you'd like to put a foursome in, you know, we have the applications here in the Selectmen's office or at the country club.
Is it online?
It is not online.
Good point.
Let's think about public relations and getting out in front of requests that you know are going to come in.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else to report? Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss contract negotiations, not to return to public session.
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for joining us.
Thank you. Good night.